Welcome to the Ross Board of Education Work Session. It's Thursday, the 16th, 2023. Mr. Castater, could you please call a roll?
Yes, Mrs. Webb?
Here.
Mr. Kleinfelder?
President.
Mr. Chanel?
Here.
Mr. Van Winkle?
Here.
Mrs. Hayes is absent. Okay.
Dr. Conkle, the floor is Mr. Castater or yours?
Before we start, in your packet, two pieces of information. One is Schedule A on the board agenda. That was a late addition. And then I made a copy of the five-year forecast. So with that being said, Mr. Castater has spent a lot of time and effort into this five-year forecast. And again, you have copies at your table. Floor is yours, Mr. Castater.
All right, thank you, Dr. Conkle. Excited to be here tonight, present the five-year forecast. It's been a work in progress for the last couple of months. And I think feel good to be able to present a forecast that has probably better news than we've seen in the last several. So we'll talk through some of those things as we go through. But wanted to start by just giving a brief overview of what a five-year forecast is. So the purpose of the five-year forecast is that it provides three years of history. So you're going to see when we dig into the numbers that we've got actual financial data from 2021 through 23, and then five years of projections. And we'll talk about what goes into those projections and how we actually derive the numbers that go into the forecast. Some of it's based on actual data, some of it's based on assumptions and things that, as we know them today, moving forward. It is a long-term, long-range planning and management tool. There are some people who believe the forecast is the soul. It's the Bible of the school district finances. I don't believe that. I think it is a helpful tool. But as we'll talk through here, as we get into some of the details, you'll see there are so many assumptions and things that can and will change that it's difficult to look too far out into the forecast. This is a snapshot. It's a snapshot financial report of facts and assumptions as we know them right now. So I will preface it by saying it can and will change, probably tomorrow. As of the way things move in school finance these days, that this is our best guess with the things that we know to be true right now. There is a legal requirement through RRC to file a forecast twice a year. So this is our November forecast, and we will do a May update at the May board meeting that we'll be able to hopefully have some updated numbers and be able to quantify some of the things that we're going to look at tonight as we move forward. So with that being said, we're going to kind of work backwards. I'm going to open up the forecast so we can talk through some of the numbers first. And then after we look through the numbers, I will go through and we'll talk about where those numbers come from and some of the assumptions and actual data that we used. So I'm going to stand up here so I can kind of scroll through. But as you'll see on the screen here, as I mentioned, the forecast really is made up of two different things. So the actual data from the previous three years. So you'll see on the left-hand column fiscal years 21 through 23 with actual numbers. And then on the right-hand side are the three columns with the forecast, with one column with the five years of forecasted information. It's broken up into revenues, expenditures. And then at the bottom, it gives you kind of your ending cash balance. That's kind of the thing that people want to see. How much money are you going to have in the bank as you close out the year and move on to the next year? There's a number of different ways to look at cash balances. We'll talk about some of the recommendations from the state. Various school districts have various levels of cash balances depending on their individual situations, but we will talk through that. So I will tell you, too, the two most important years to look at in the five-year forecast are the current fiscal year, which is fiscal '24, as well as fiscal '25. So those two years have the most solid data, much of which has already been determined. If you go out too much further past fiscal '25 into '26, '27, and '28, there are a lot of assumptions, a lot of things that can change when you're looking that far ahead. We'll talk about the state biennial budget process and how that impacts the five-year forecast. And we are in, right now, year one of a two-year budget. So we're in a budget that covers fiscal '24 and '25. We'll have a new two-year budget for '26 and '27, and then a third two-year budget that starts on '28. So putting much stock into what 2028 says at this point, three biennial budgets away, is tough to do. As you can see, as we scroll down through here, revenues and expenditures. Draw your attention to two different lines down here. Line 55 on the screen, which also is denoted as 6.010. That is excess of revenues and other financing sources. So what that shows you is are you spending more than you're bringing in? And that deficit spending is what causes you to eat away at your cash balance, no different than in your home situation. If you have a checking in the savings account and you're overspending in your checking and have to continually move money from your savings over to cover it, you're eventually depleting that savings account. So as you can see in column C, we were deficit spending in 2021 by a little over $1 million, 1.1 million. With some of the cuts and attrition and things that we've done over the last several years, we've reversed that deficit spending for '22 and '23, and then are projected to not be deficit spending for '24, '25, '26. So the next three years, we are in a position where we're projecting that we will not be deficit spending. And you can see that deficit returns for '27 and '28, which does begin to eat into that cash balance. Jumping down to the next line, 7.020, which is your ending cash balance, you can see that last year's actual number, 4.861 million, was our cash balance carryover into this year. And the good news is, if you look at the next three years, that cash balance is projected to grow, which is a good thing. So we're projected in with 5.18 million this year, up to a little shy of 6 next year, and then a little over 6 million the following year. Look further out, years four and five, you see that deficit spending starts eating into the cash balance a little bit. But we believe we're, you know, in a good position for the next couple of years. The next logical question that most people ask is, okay, well, how much money should you have in the bank? That's reflected down here on line 104, true cash days. So the recommendation, the best practice recommendation is that you have 60 days, 60 true cash days in the bank each year in your carryover. So looking at our forecast as we're presenting it tonight, you've got, the last two years, we were at that benchmark. So fiscal '22, we ended with 63. Fiscal '23, we ended with 61. This year, we're projected to be at 64. And then it actually jumps to over 70 for the next two years before it dips back down a little bit.
So Steve, that's not no deal, and that's...
I was going to say, that's not adhered.
Yeah, I think that line was just cut off.
Okay, it could have been cut off on the copy. But yeah, so that's the true cash days. And I have a couple graphs that we'll look at that kind of reflects that as well. So again, 60 days is the benchmark. That's what the state wants you to have. I believe most districts look to be between 30 and 60 as a comfort level. Every district situation is different. I don't believe there are many districts like us that, with our funding levels, that are able to surpass much more than 60 days for a long period of time. But again, I think it tells the story that we have stabilized the financial situation somewhat, and that we'll talk about the reasons why that happened. But it shows us, at least for this fiscal year and the next couple of years, we're projected to be at that 60-day benchmark moving forward. This is just a summary tab. It's basically a smaller version of the same information. So again, 6.010, you can see the deficit spending line, that we are not projected to be deficit spending for the next three years. Does come back in 2027. There's your 7.020, your cash balance line, that shows the carryover cash balance each year. The unreserved fund balance, we, every year, we carry over a little bit. We carry over purchase orders every year. So obviously, you're ending your fiscal year in June. We're already making purchases for the next school year. So we've kind of have money that's encumbered or spoken for, so we carry over. We try to limit that as much as possible. And we've done a good job in our office over the last couple of years of limiting that amount of encumbered carryover money just to try to stay flush with cash as much as we can. So the 15.010 line that's in green at the bottom is the unreserved fund balance. That includes any of that carryover purchase order money that's in there. Like I said, we've done a better job with that the last couple of years and hoping to reduce that down even more as we, you know, continue to update our processes in the office. Okay, so those are the numbers. That's the forecast. That's where we're projected to be. Let's talk a little bit about how we got to those numbers. On the revenue side of things, we're going to talk about what I consider to be the most notable assumptions as to how we generated the numbers in the forecast. The first one, I think everyone's aware of, the triennial reappraisal update that's happening for 2023. I know we had Nancy Nix, the Butler County Auditor, here in July that talked about that process. We are projecting a 20% increase in Class 1 valuation. So that is consistent and the same with what we had in the May forecast. There's a couple reasons for that. And we'll talk about some of the legislation that's still pending out there, some things that could happen over the summer moving into next year, and why we feel like being conservative with a 20% increase was the best course of action, given our financial situation, and really wanting to show almost this forecast being kind of like a worst-case scenario, right? So it could come in higher. We hope, if it does come in higher, it certainly helps the district's financial situation. But right now, we left it at a 20% increase, kind of as a worst-case scenario moving forward. State funding for fiscal '24 and '25, state biennial budget that was passed in June. It was favorable for Ross. We did, are projected to continue to receive an increase in state funding for this year and next year. That can and probably will change. And we'll talk about the reasons why that may be adjusted some as we go. Athletics pay-to-play, we made the decision to reduce that down from 825 to 300 over the summer. So that is a loss of revenue. That is built into the forecast. So we've updated the amount of money that we're anticipating we'll collect from participation fees. That reduces our revenue a little bit, but we felt like that was the right thing to do for our athletic program and our families to try to continue our, you know, the history of success we have in athletics. The earned income tax. The earned income tax for our school district is a good thing because it grows over time. So last year, we realized in fiscal '23 a 7.19% increase in the earned income tax. And we're projecting a 3.67% growth in the earned income tax this year. And that is real-time data based on the October school district income tax payment that we received and posted at the end of the month. So we believe that projection is right about on with what we're going to receive in terms of an increase in the income tax for fiscal '24. Future revenue assumptions. These are things that we're keeping our eye on as we move forward, probably more towards the last three years of the forecast. So the reappraisal update, the reason that's so important is that we've got, we're looking at a potential 10% to 14% swing. So that 20% could go as high as 30% to 34%, depending on how the assessed value comes out if there's some impact from House Bill 187. So just briefly to explain House Bill 187. Essentially, what the tax assessment that happened from the state level was done giving more weight to the sales in the last year. So 2022 sales impacted that assessment. When you take that, those 2022 sales, our actual increase in valuation was probably closer to 30%. What House Bill 187 would say is that you can't use the last year increase. You have to use a three-year average. That three-year average takes us down closer to 24%. So where's that going to land? I don't think anyone is completely sure right now. It's kind of been sitting in the Senate for the last month or so. And, you know, until we know for sure, until we actually get that, you know, tax settlement in the bank account in April, again, that's why we felt like it was best to be conservative with that 20% appraisal until we know for sure exactly what we're going to get. Two things about the increased valuation is definitely going to help our property tax revenue. We receive a lot of our funding from property taxes. There is a but with that. Community valuation is a huge component of the fair school funding formula. So as that valuation goes up, your funding component from the state is going to go down. We don't know how much that'll be, but the state is not going to let you just receive a bunch of, a windfall of money, as it's been called, without making adjustments within the funding formula. So we will have to continue to see how our increased valuation impacts what they call, what they determine the local capacity is in the funding formula. And that ties into the next point, state funding. For the last three years, were the fair school funding formula continuing to be phased in? It was scheduled to be phased in over a six-year period of time. The governor has done that in the last couple biennial budgets. But again, you're talking, you know, three, four, three, four, five years out. Will it continue to be phased in at the same rate that it's been done so far? I don't think anyone can really answer that. The income tax is another thing to keep the eye on. As you can see, we went from a 7% increase last year to projecting less than a 4 this year. There are a handful of school districts around the state that actually saw a drop in their income tax through the first quarter of 2024. So generally, income tax rises over time. But there's people that we've talked to that believe that might be an indication that a recession is coming. But, you know, that's yet to be seen. We'll have to see where that goes. But it's something we'll keep an eye on as we move forward with, hopefully, we, our projection on that continuing to increase that income tax holds true. On the expense side of things, the expense assumptions that probably make up most of the expense side of the forecast. I know we've been through, we've talked about this a lot. We've been through tough times the last several years. The reduction in force and attrition savings that are built into this forecast account for almost $2 million. So we have saved in benefits and wages 1.919 million of actual savings over the last four years that started in fiscal '22 and extends out actually into next year, into fiscal '25, with positions that we've reduced and with people that have left. Maybe we haven't replaced some of those things. But that is one of the major factors that has helped change the financial position that we're in. The health insurance savings, I know we've discussed that as well. We did sign a three-year contract with Medical Mutual of Ohio. So we negotiated a 2% increase over our current rate for calendar year '24, which starts January 1. And then that rate will be locked in for the next two years. So we will not have an increase for calendar year '25 or calendar year '26. That's a significant savings for our district. As you can see in the parentheses there, we'd received a 27.5% increase over the previous three years. So that's a tremendous amount of money that we're not going to have to pay in our health insurance program for the next three years. ESER add back to the general fund. We did have a couple positions that we were paying for with ESER funds as that money slowly runs out. Those things have to be brought back into the general fund, so that is modeled into the forecast as well. And then base salary increases. So we have a collective bargaining agreement on the agenda tonight for approval that includes a 4% increase for fiscal '24, a 3% increase for '25. And for modeling purposes, we put a 2% estimate in there for fiscal '26 through '28. So we are, we're excited to be able to have a two-year agreement. Look back 10 years, from fiscal '13 on, that's the largest back-to-back year increase that we've seen in this district in the last 10 years. And our staff deserves it, and we're excited to be able to do this tonight and then move forward, hopefully with continued good news, and be able to move. Steps also cost us 2.1 annually. I think that's important to remember. So when you're looking at a 4% increase on the base, it's actually costing us 6.1% because you're paying 2.1% in step increases every year, no matter what. So those are the primary expense assumptions that make up that side of the forecast.
Hey, Steve. Do you know what health insurance increase you have in there for '27, '28?
Yeah, I've got that on. Yep. So the future expense assumptions.
Trying to lead you.
Future assumptions as we move forward. So this is, this is an important piece, is staffing levels are assumed flat in fiscal '26 through '28. So this forecast does not include restoring any of the cut positions that we've made in the last several years. And that is partially, partially because of the district enrollment. We've had relatively flat enrollment over the last several years. And even a couple of years, it's been a slight decrease year over year. So we're expecting that trend to continue. So this is assuming that we're not going to restore positions that have been cut over the last several years. Health insurance, to Mr. Chanel's question, we'll have a new market bid for '27. We have a three-year contract, so we'll have to go through this whole process again, unfortunately. Even though it worked out well for us, it was a heavy lift for our district to make this switch. We have 9% increase assumed in there for fiscal '27 and '28 after the contract with MMO runs out. We believe that's fair based on trends that we've seen. We are working with our association on salary schedule reform as well. Some things we're trying to do that we hope could benefit both sides as we move forward with the district in terms of trying to come up with a compensation package that makes sense for the district and for our employees. Staff recruitment and retention and an increasingly shallow talent pool. We're seeing less and less people come into education. Was up at the Ohio School Boards Conference on Sunday and Monday. One of the sessions I went to, the guy, he made the analogy, we used to have a pool of candidates for positions. Now we have a puddle. So it's, you're seeing less and less people coming in into education, unfortunately, which makes it difficult to fill positions that are open, some more than others, obviously. But we are definitely, even as a high-performing district with great kids and great families, we're seeing the strains of some of that lack of talent pool that's coming into the profession. Last one, we'll continue to look at our business operations and educational programming. We've done a great job from the performance audit a couple of years ago to making changes, to negotiating new gas and electric contracts, to negotiating a new copier contract. So those things that will save us money over time. So we'll continue to look at those things and look at our offerings. And education changes at a rapid pace. So as you see more and more kids taking College Credit Plus classes and things of that nature, that affects and impacts our funding levels. So we need to continue to keep an eye on that and make sure that we're up to date with what's happening there and how it's affecting our funding. This is just a graph and another small chart that, again, looks at revenues and expenditures. You can see revenue at the top, expenditures, and then that ending cash balance. So we'll say that right now, in the projections, our revenue is growing at a rate that's about 2% less than our expenditures. So we are seeing, that's where that deficit spending starts to creep in. Again, it doesn't impact our cash balance too much until the fifth year out there, with a lot, which a lot of things could change as we move forward. But that's kind of what we're seeing there. That graph kind of represents that. So our revenue isn't keeping up with expenses completely over time, but we will see how that actually plays out as we move into the fourth and fifth year of the forecast. This is just a graphical representation of the ending cash balance. You can see up top, the middle line there, ending cash balance, I kind of color-coded it red and green. Red is where we're below the 60-day recommendation, and green is where we're above. So we have a couple of years buffer there of being above the 60-day recommendation of ending cash balance before it starts to dip down, you know, into that, into that under-60 model, starting in '27. This is just a breakdown of our fiscal '24 estimated revenues. You can see we're about 58, 60, 40 essentially, 58.4% from local sources, which would be our property taxes and the income tax, and then 41% from the state sources. And this shows you, because we're such a locally heavily funded district, that that property valuation is a huge, kind of a huge cliffhanger for us out there that depending on where that lands and how that comes out for us, that could make a significant difference in the amount of money we have coming in just because it's so heavily funded from those local sources. Estimated expenses, so you can see there, we're about a little over 80% salary and benefits, wages and benefits, which is a little lower than we've been in the last couple of years. We've kind of creeped up more towards the mid-80s, but we're going down now a little closer to 80%. And then purchase services, which are a lot of our contracts with the ESC and things of that nature, make up about 14% of our overall estimated expenses this year. And again, I want to emphasize that this includes for '24 the negotiated increase. So that is included in the forecast. So that went up a little bit where it was before with that 4% negotiated increase. In summary, I would say these are probably the four or five biggest takeaways, or five or six biggest takeaways that I would hope people could walk away with tonight. Increased revenue from state foundation funding coupled with the expense reduction has helped stabilize our overall financial position. I think those two things together right now are, make the biggest impact. That state funding, we're projected to be up close to $1 million over the next two years. Then you look at 1.9 million in staffing reductions, plus the healthcare savings, plus some of the other business operation savings that we've realized that. Those three things alone have really impacted our position. Evaluation questions are still a major factor for us. Talked about House Bill 187. There was some rumors and some talk and legislation swirling around Columbus a couple of months ago about potential changes to the 20-mil floor. That would be devastating for public school districts in Ohio if that happens. School districts have strategically made financial decisions with levies over the last 50 years, really, to put themselves in a position where they're on the 20-mil floor to be able to receive those increases in property taxes from the valuation updates. If they change the 20-mil floor, that will have a tremendous impact on a lot of school districts. I think right now, close to 75% of districts in Ohio are on the 20-mil floor. So districts are relying, a lot of districts relying on that money to keep their operations going. I've mentioned this earlier, year five of this forecast is two additional state budget cycles from now. So trying to predict what's going to happen with the state budget, one cycle from now, much less two, is a difficult task. So again, I would encourage people to focus on fiscal '24 and '25, where we have more real data inputs that we're pulling from as actual numbers versus what is at the end. We'll continue to work hard on reviewing cost-saving measures. I think we've done that over the last several years, and we'll continue that process moving along. And staffing levels will drive, is what drives the cost, and there's no question about that. We are, when you look at 80% of your expenses coming from salaries and benefits, wages and benefits, that is the primary thing that's going to drive costs up. So that'll be something that'll be really important to talk about over the next several years. And hopefully, the May forecast will show some clarity around the property tax issue. We should have our April settlement by then, so we hopefully will know what's going to happen. When I was putting this presentation together, I looked at Jenny Logan's forecast from last May, and her forecast said November will show clarity around the property tax issue. And here we are in November, and we have a little bit better idea, but not a ton more information than we had back in May. So we will see, we will see what continues to happen with that. But again, I think going back to, people are going to ask, why do you have 20% built into that valuation? It's the most conservative number we have to give us the best estimate where we're at now. If it comes in better, it comes in better. But we felt like that was the right thing to do, given the situation and the uncertainty we have moving forward. And that is all I have.
Mr. Castater, so I'm watching the news each, every day, and it says that the economy is great right now. The Bidenomics is working and everything is great. So how is earned income going from 7.19 to projected 3.67?
Is that a rhetorical question?
I mean, it kind of is a question, really. Like, how are they predicting that?
Yeah, and again, it's based on the settlement that we've got. We've received two income tax payments so far. And that is just based on the percentage of what we received before that we're projecting at 3.67. And we have, I will say, we have 2% increase in the income tax build-in for the last four years of the forecast moving forward from there. So, you know, this is a weird economic situation we're in. People are talking about a recession that doesn't have anything to do with employment, which has never happened in the history of this country, where the unemployment rate is still really low, but we're going to be going into a recession, which is kind of a strange economic time to be in.
Which is odd. Mr. Kleinfelder, do you have any questions around this?
Well, I don't know if I have a question, but I...
Comments?
I have a comment. I think, you know, the 20% increase, I don't know, you know, to me, that's still a voodoo number. It could be more, but my fear is that when the tax bills get mailed out and everybody sees what it does to their personal situation, they're going to be burning up the phone to the auditor's office and legislators. And I don't think it's over yet. There's rumor that they may adjust it for the August bill. And, you know, for what we got now, they might take back. I wish we had more clarity on trying to run a business and a school and a thing, but to me, it's voodoo economics, you know? So it is what it is, I guess, but it makes me nervous because you don't know what's going to happen. And I've said it before, I heard it at a meeting, Andy Brozard said it at a meeting, why they don't put in the real estate sales in there, actual, calculate everybody's bills instead of waiting around two and three years doing it. It could be ongoing and updated every single dang day. But I guess that would be too simple and too easy. We're in a computer world. It can be done. It's not somebody sitting around with a stack of papers in a back room somewhere anymore. And then, I don't know if it matters, but on your forecast, the PDF, the ending cash balances, I don't know, has that been updated?
Well, remember, there's two lines. So there's one that's the true, the ending cash balance, and then you also have... So there's one that's the true, the ending cash balance, and then you also have the encumbrance line that shows what it would be.
But they're a couple days off.
Yeah. It's probably just the difference between the encumbered line versus the unencumbered line. We have to submit both of them to the state so they'll both be...
They're likely putting the raises in there despite the fact that we have voted on it. We probably should have voted on that in that presentation.
Up-to-date information.
Mr. Chanel, we comment, it just makes me nervous that, because I, I look for the government to try and take back some.
Yeah, and we, we've talked about that as treasures in Butler County. That was a huge topic of conversation earlier this month, that will we get maybe the full assessment in the April settlement, and then things happen over the course of the summer that we get a reduced amount in September? And that could very well happen. Again, I think you just don't know. And to your point, you know, until that, until that check hits the bank, right? Like, you don't really know how much money you're going to get, and even after then, it could still be changed moving forward. But I, I agree with your assessment that when people...
Personal financial advisor I'm married to is going to call the auditor's office and get that tax bill, I guarantee.
I, I would, I would agree, and, and your, your estimated values are on the auditor's website right now for 2023, so if you haven't checked that out, you can. I would make sure you're sitting down before you look at it. But, you know, it, it is a lot of increase in valuation that was going to, which is going to drive up people's property taxes.
Mr. Chanel, do you have any questions?
No que, no questions, just comment. I just want to thank Mr. Castater for doing this, and this is, as his first official forecast is treasure, so, you know, we worked through a lot of this in the Finance Committee and solved some of this ahead of time, but stellar job.
Mrs. Hayes?
I feel like when you go last, or next to the last, it's like...
Do what?
I, I just feel like agree with what you're saying.
Got you. Steve, great job. I want to echo what Andy said. I think this is probably one of the, along with, you know, when Jeremy came and played, it worked here, and then obviously with Jenny, but this is a pretty true forecast for right now, which is good.
Yeah, it definitely is. I, I think we, we did a lot of work to make it as realistic as possible. Again, moving out several years, it's hard to tell where to put things, but, you know, leaving state funding flat moving forward. But the actual inputs for this year and next year, we, I, I think we're pretty right on with real numbers of what's actually happening, and I think that's important for people to see. Now, is it going to change? Absolutely. But as we know them today, this is a very realistic document.
Yeah. Paul Carpenter at Butler Tech, Keith worked with him, I have too, really good treasurer, but he, he doesn't even look beyond two years, and he looks two years back, and that's kind of what, what you mentioned, but yeah, so I don't really have any other comments regarding the forecast, but I really appreciate it.
Just along as, I mean, and Steve did a good job, he mentioned it, but going forward, try to be conservative, so that's why I put in 3% instead of 7% for the income tax, and could change, but hopefully it changes for the better.
For the better, yeah. Yep. Mrs. Webb?
Well, first off, I want to just thank you for putting together, I mean, this is very, very detailed, so I, I just appreciate the thoroughness. I'm sure it took a lot of time, so thank you for that. And then I, I did just have, like, one question. So 50, over 58% essentially of our school district's funding comes from local revenue sources or whatnot. What, I guess, what, what factors would have to change for there to be more of a balance between state foundation monies and local monies, or like, what, what is the criteria?
Yeah, it really goes back to what they, what they include in the formula. So the funding formula has mult, I, I think, last count, 23 different variants or somewhere in that range that go into the fu, funding formula. Two of the primary ones are property valuation and adjusted gross income of the residents of the school district. So as those things go up, the foundation funding is going to go down. So until they decide to more wholly fund education in Ohio and not, basically what, what a lot of people are saying about where we're at now is that this valuation has essentially just flipped the burden, right? So instead of the state having to give so much money to public education, it's now the taxpayers that who have already given a lot are going to have to give even more. So the state really is the one that's coming out ahead in this whole situation, and more of the burden is going to be shifted to the taxpayers, just, without a vote, just based on the, the valuation and the percentage, the, the effective tax rates in whatever community you live in, it's going to affect your property taxes.
But we don't see the funding formula changing, do we?
No, and I think it goes back to how, are they going to continue to phase it in? I think the formula is here to stay, but it's just a matter of how are they going to phase it in, and does that positively continue to impact us? We won't know that until the next biennial budget rolls around in '26.
Any other questions?
Steve, you do a good job with it. I just, it's like hitting a moving target with a slingshot, but it is what it is.
Okay, with that, with that being said, we'll recess for 10 minutes, and then we'll reconvene our regular meeting. Thanks.